Evening. I would like to order the Winston-Salem City Council meeting and ask the city secretary to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Bessie.
Here.
Councilmember Montgomery. Mayor Pro Tem Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Thank you. Would you please join the city council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you, and certainly we want to, first of all, I want to thank all our public safety and other city personnel for the long hours they put in this past weekend on preparing for the storm, and then we also certainly keep in mind individuals down in the eastern part of our state, as well as other parts of our state who've been impacted much more than us, but the city manager, I think, Damon, thank you for the hard work that you all did this weekend as well. Please join the city council and me in pleasurable allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Sergeant Orange tonight is Lieutenant Vince Rigo. Lieutenant, thank you for being with us tonight. May we have the first honorarium, please?
Resolution honoring the 2019 Outstanding Women Leaders September recipients. Whereas, according to the National Women's History Project, it is important to share the stories of individual women who have successfully challenged the role of women in both business and the paid labor force. Women have always worked, but often their work has been undervalued and unpaid. It is important to honor trailblazing women who persisted nevertheless. And whereas Mayor Pro Tempore Vivian H. Burke and the city of Winston-Salem will acknowledge the strength and effectiveness of women leaders in Winston-Salem at a recognition program on March 21, 2019, which marks the 16th Annual Outstanding Women Leaders Program. And whereas the Outstanding Women Leaders Program has previously recognized 152 chief executive officers, doctors, attorneys, and women of numerous professions as an effort to shine a light on the significant contributions made by women leaders in the community. And whereas four of this year's honorees who exemplified leadership characteristics are Pamela Anglin, Resource Development Director, Habitat for Humanity; Nadia Quander, Creative Community Lab and Project Manager for the Thomas S. Keenan Institute for the Arts at UNC School of the Arts; Rashida Shankle, Community Engagement Coordinator for SG Atkins Community Development Corporation; and Mamie Sutton, Director of Community Engagement Programs, Reynolds American. And whereas the hard work and accomplishments of all women are valued and appreciated by the mayor, Mayor Pro Tempore Vivian H. Burke, Winston-Salem City Council, and the citizens of Winston-Salem. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and Winston-Salem City Council approve honoring the aforementioned 2019 Outstanding Women Leaders and wishes them much success as they continue their efforts in leading the next generation of women leaders.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion second, Councilmember Burke. Any discussion? Not all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That is unanimous. So Councilmember Burke, if you want to.
Yes, we have various certificates out there. I'm going to say what I need to say from here, then Councilmember Adams and I will join the ladies to take a picture with you. This is a proud time for us, and I want you to know we couldn't make it if we didn't have women who are strong, who stand up and believe. So we're blessed in this city of Winston-Salem to have women who step forward saying, "I live in America, I step forward, not backwards." And we're so proud of you and the committee. Would you join me in?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, this is Pamela Anglin. Mamie Sutton. Nadia Quander.
Thank you very much.
And, but not we, we have Rashida Shankle, which I'll say anyway.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're here.
I need to ask Ms. Quander, are you by any chance American? Uh... I need to say that, Attorney Quander, relative is one of the founders of Alpha Cat Battery. Quander. And my husband, and my son and my husband, they are relatives of DeWolfe and Luthman Burke, two of the founders of Alpha Cat Battery. Do we have family?
He's for all of us.
Shall I take a picture?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution honoring Winston-Salem native Ms. Nia Imani Franklin, Miss America 2019, and Miss New York 2018. Whereas Ms. Nia Imani Franklin was born to Mr. James and Ms. Christie Franklin in Winston-Salem, North Carolina, and attended Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. And whereas as a student in North Davidson High School, Nia excelled in academics and as an athlete in track and cross-country. After earning a position with the prestigious North Carolina Honors Corps, she formed a band and composed her class theme song entitled "Peace." While attending East Carolina University, she was a member of the ECU Excels Program and earned a bachelor's degree in music composition. In 2013, while at ECU, Nia was crowned Ms. Black and Gold, a scholastic pageant sponsored by Alpha Kappa Alpha Fraternity. And whereas she continued her studies at the University of North Carolina School for the Arts, graduating summa cum laude with a master's degree in music composition, where she also earned the Campus Art Scholarship and was awarded the Beth Stovall Music Scholarship. At UNCSA, Nia participated in Artist Core, which is an artist-driven AmeriCore service program placing artists in schools and community-based institutions working with high-need students. And whereas she is a baptized member of Mount Zion Baptist Church, where she has served as Assistant Director of the Children's Choir and President of the Youth Ensemble. Nia spearheaded the Gifted Program, showcasing youth talent throughout the city of Winston-Salem, and was a Keenan Fellow at Lincoln Center Education. And whereas Nia has a passion for impacting children's lives, encouraging them to aspire to be productive and creative citizens who strive for excellence. She helped raise more than $40,000 for the Ronald McDonald House of New York and also organized a benefit concert for cancer research. And whereas Nia was crowned Miss New York in June 2018, on September 9, 2018, touting a platform of advocating for the arts, Nia became Miss America 2019. During this time, she tirelessly performed in support of the Children's Miracle Hospitals, which advocates donating stem cells to patients such as her father, James, helping to save lives from those afflicted with non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. Therefore, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Winston-Salem do hereby proclaim Monday, September 17, 2018, as Winston-Salem Native Miss Nia Imani Franklin Day, and recognize her gifts, talents, and dedication to serving. We hereby honor and congratulate her on becoming Miss America 2019, as well as having attained Miss New York 2018, and are proud of her accomplishments.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by voting yes, and anyone opposed, vote no. I'm sure it'll be unanimous, and we have Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Burke is going to present the resolution.
Yes, I'm so proud and pleased and honored. Mount Zion Church in the house tonight. Stand up so we can see Mount Zion Church. You're in the house tonight. We are so grateful to have this opportunity, to have a young woman who grew up in this city, went to the schools here, and became, I believe she was once Ms. Durn, if I'm, she was Ms. Durn, and then she became Ms. New York, and she became Ms. America. I said every time she travels and she says she's from Winston-Salem, North Carolina, look how much she's marketed in this city. I would like for the Franklin family to come up so that I can give you this resolution. I see the mother and the father. And by the way, Ms. Franklin was also the mother here. She was in the North Carolina family. You danced, though. I, we are so proud. I've said what I need to say. Would the two of you like to make a comment? Mother and father, the mother and father of such a wonderful, wonderful... I see the grandfather over there, Mr. Franklin.
Opryrazi.
We want to thank all of our family and friends, and Mr. Franklin and Lola, you may stand up. We have several of our family and friends. My sister, my two sisters, Renee and Tris, and her grandbaby, Makai. My niece, Kia. My brother, David. My mom's sister, my aunt that lives here. Iris and my cousin, Iris and Sadie. We have our church members. We have Solomon and Mark. The Sunday School Superintendent, who Nia served for. The Children's Choir Director, who Nia worked under, and her husband, Al. I can't see Pat Biddy from the Sunday School. We can't see behind. Anyone else?
Is there anyone else?
Ms. Dr. Hairston and Mrs. Hairston. These people have supported your godmother. Supported Nia financially. Anybody else? But they have supported Nia prayerfully, financially. And we couldn't, these are like our core people right here, if you're listening, but that have supported our whole family. We have two other children. And this is just who, they just supported Nia all the way, and it's just still unbelievable that she is Miss America. I know she's talented, I mean, I grew up in the house with her. We sing, both of us sing, but it's still so unbelievable. But we know that, as we saw it, things progressed, it's nobody but God that helped her get to that level and propelled her there, to keep her there. We just continue to need your prayers, because she has been traveling, she's been, she just got back today from California, and she'll just need your prayers. This is something that is just bigger than us, so we need your prayers in order to just for Nia to continue to be successful, so.
I want to say this briefly. When I was at Mount Zion and I was with Ms. Franklin, I did ask all of the girls, as well as the boys, to look at her. I said, "If you want to be a person like her, you have to love yourself, and you have to respect yourself, and you can't let anybody get into your mind to tell you that you're not good at what you do." So the Frankelins, you have done well. I've known her from a child.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
Want to recognize Jim DeCrisco, who's the Vice Chancellor for Economic Development at the North Carolina School of the Arts, of course, I'm sure they're very proud of the, as well. Item H3, please.
Resolution celebrating the life and legacy of Aurelia Gray Eller. Whereas Mrs. Aurelia Gray Eller was a lifelong resident of Winston-Salem, where she attended Summit School and Salem Academy, and graduated cum laude from Duke University in 1954. And whereas Aurelia met and married her husband, Attorney John Dewalden Eller Jr., that same year. They had three children, John III, Aurelia, and Mary Louise. And whereas she held leadership positions in numerous organizations, including President of the Winston-Salem Arts Council, the Winston-Salem Symphony, and the Winston-Salem Junior League, through which she played a primary role in integrating the Winston-Salem Junior League. And whereas Aurelia served on the Boards of Salem Academy and College, Old Salem Incorporated, Senior Services, the Rotary Club of Winston-Salem, and Eckerd Youth Alternatives Wilderness Camps. She was a member of the Board of Visitors of Wake Forest University and the Board of Trustees of Winston-Salem State University, from whom she received a Doctor of Humane Letters in 1989. She was co-chair of the Forsyth County Bicentennial Commission, and she was the first female chair of the United Way Campaign in 1982. Whereas Aurelia authored three books, including one on which she collaborated, Old Salem Brought to Life, a book of paintings by her mother, Pauline Bonson Gray, depicting artwork that helped catalyze the renovation and preservation of what is now Old Salem. And whereas she was recognized with a number of prominent service awards, including the YWCA Leadership Award and the Chamber of Commerce's Distinguished Service Award. In 1982, she was named one of the Winston-Salem Journal's 20 Most Influential People of Winston-Salem. She was the 2012 winner of the Take the Lead Campaign for the Bethesda Center for the Homeless. And whereas Aurelia lived a life devoted to her family, but also found joy in volunteerism and creating an enduring legacy of making life better for people of Winston-Salem and beyond. She had a major impact on her community, especially in the arts, her true love. And whereas the mayor has requested the outside lights at Historic City Hall and the Twin Arches Bridge Lights at US 52 and Research Park Boulevard reflect blue lights, Aurelia's favorite color, beginning September 21 through September 23. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Winston-Salem do hereby recognize and honor the memory of Mrs. Aurelia Gray Eller for her lifetime of dedication and philanthropy to Winston-Salem, particularly its arts community.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Second. Motion second. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. I'll ask Councilmember Adams and Councilmember Burke to present that to, I think, Mr. John Eller, the son is here.
Before I present this to John, I talked with him the other morning, and I said he knew his mother and I were very good friends. We could sit down, we could talk. We did not make excuses for how things were happening in this city. If it was things that needed to be changed, she was willing to say. One example I'll give you is this. I made a statement down here in City Hall about how Old Salem should define itself. And the next day, Aurelia was calling me, Vivian, we just need to talk. Because at the same time, Mr. French was here, but he left. We had budget, and I felt that they were not defining themselves clearly. And so he called also, because he felt it was important that Old Salem defines itself. Your mother was a very fine lady. She and I had lunch together. We even went to some of the operas, symphonies, together. And we could talk to each other about our culture. And until people start talking about the culture, we're not moved from the same page. And I'm sure Mr. Larson can tell you that from our conversation, a person was hired to be the person to bring up the history of minorities, to let them know the role that we played, and we were not there by choice. We were there because somebody carried us there. Those are the kinds of conversations that I could have with your mother. She told me about all of you, the grants, she loved growing up. And to be a wealthy woman, she was not selfish. She had a heart just full of love. And one day she called me, she said, "Vivian, I just need to talk about Thurmond Street." I said, "We need to be talking to the councilwoman about Thurmond Street." And they renewed the relationship, started the relationship. So I just want you to know that this city is blessed to have had... One day I asked her, I said, "What does that G stand for?" She said, "Well, Vivian, my daddy was James A. Gray." I said, "Why are you expecting for me to know it?" But I just want you to know, we were good with each other. And you're blessed children to have a mother like your mother.
Well, I was just going to say, one of the many stories I know of my mother, it was mentioned that she integrated the, she was instrumental in integrating the Junior League. She didn't do it by herself. And when she decided to do it, to try to get it done, she got Cope Haynes and Mary Louise Davis to second her nomination. She wasn't going to do it by herself. And I just think that's a, that's a, that's a, another example of how my mother liked to work behind the scenes. She knew how to get the powers involved first before she tried to do something. And she knew nobody was going to go against the wishes of the two original founders of the chapter of the Winston-Salem Junior League. But she didn't try to do things on her own, she tried to get a consensus going first.
Well, you know, Milton Rhodes standing up there, man, where's Milton Rhodes? I see him in here. Stand up, Milton Rhodes. Your mother was the one who, when you look at Haynes Theater and you look at the Milton Rhodes, there were five of us that was appointed to be honorary chairs. Earlene King, Cope Haynes, Bud and Zany, Baker and Vivian Burke. And all that money, and of course Haynes, he had, man, he was, played a big role. So the change you see down there, your mother, and then when this councilwoman got elected, we took her tour of that building. And we know how important art to this city is, so we are grateful to your family.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And I apologize, Mr. Taylor, you asked to be heard on the other resolution. I apologize. We'll go back to that if you'd like to make a comment.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to take a moment to say just a couple of words. I had a comment for the second honorarium, but it entails everything that we've just heard today. I just want to take a moment and say that I am truly humbled and inspired by the work that I've seen here today. And I say that as a native son of this community. Anybody knows me, knows that I'm very proud of this city. I'm very proud of my city. And I say my city, because I was born and reared here. And seeing you stand up one by one, name by name, says to me the old African adage that it takes a village to raise a child. Well, thank you for being part of all of our villages. And every, every single morning I get out of bed, I try to make our community a better place to live, work, and relax. But I want our little boys and girls, I have three kids, to know that you can be anything you want to be from this city. And now we know that you can be a woman outstanding leader. You can be Ms. Aurelia Gray Eller, or you can be Miss America. So thank you to all of you for what you do for our city, and truly you've made our city to be a better place to live, work, and relax. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Tonight's agenda is comprised of the two parts, the general agenda and the consent agenda, and as always, the practice of the council, but take the consent agenda is the first order of business. Items on this agenda have been unanimously recommended by a committee of the city council or are being considered in accordance with established city procedure. There'll be no discussion of the items on this agenda unless the councilmember's so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered individually. Items not removed will be enacted in one motion. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed tomorrow at 9:30 a.m. and again Wednesday at 9:00 p.m. Copies of our agendas and videos are always available to members of the public by just going to the city website and watch, click on the Watch City Meetings Online link. Are there any items that you wish to pull from the consent? C2. Is there a motion on the ballot?
Moved.
Second. Motion second on the ballot. All those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Did the motion show up? Yeah, we just voted.
Yeah, we did.
Everybody voted. Yeah. It was there. It's all right, we're good. All right. Item G, excuse me, C2.
Item C2. Resolution authorizing financial assistance to Front Street Capital located in the East Ward, recommended by the Finance Committee.
Councilmember Montgomery asked for this.
Yep, I don't have any challenges with this, but I want to lift up this investment, and I'm going to ask Ben, if you kind of speak to specifics of this investment, return to the community and what we're looking at.
Good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Pro Tem Burke, members of the city council.
Good evening.
The item before you tonight is a resolution to approve economic development assistance to Front Street Capital for the development of the Bailey, excuse me, the building 23-1, Bailey South, and adjacent Morse Buildings in the Winston-Wake Forest Innovation Quarter. The development plans include an investment of $25 million to develop 100,000 square feet of office and retail space. A key component of this project is the provision of parking, and that's where the city's assistance comes in to this project. As part of the city's assistance, the city would provide up to 180 spaces in the fourth and church parking deck for, to support the project. Currently, 130 of those spaces are designated for city vehicles. And so as part of this project, the increment from the new investment, from the $25 million, will be used to construct a replacement parking lot for those city vehicles that would allow up to 225 spaces. So the item before you today would be approval of the economic development assistance, which would total $522,725 over a seven-year period. That is, represents 50% of the net benefit from the, from the project. If you look at the project analysis over the seven-year period, the city would still realize a net benefit totaling 1 point, almost $1.2 million. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Just a couple of questions. One, the developers will be making a $25 million investment, correct?
Yes, sir.
Out of that $25 million investment, we're looking at a $522,000 incentive payment that will go towards building a parking lot. Who will be the beneficiary of that parking lot?
The city will.
So the city will essentially use the $522,000 to build a parking lot using the new tax increment that the city will benefit from. City will control that parking lot through the extent, until the city is in a place to be able to replace the parking spaces that will be lost in the deck, correct?
Yes, sir.
The city will now make annual income off of leasing the parking spaces in the deck, correct?
Yes, sir.
So currently, we don't make any money from the spaces that are taken up by city vehicles?
That's correct.
And that's because we use them with our own vehicles?
Yes, sir. They're city vehicles who are parked in those spaces.
So what, do you have the exact dollar amount annually we'll receive?
Yes, sir. So during the three years that the city would be using the new service lot, the city would still net a benefit of almost $155,000 a year. Once that three-year period has expired, the city would continue to realize 50% of the net benefit, the next, net tax benefit from the development, as well as $97,000 from the lease of the spaces by the developer for an annual benefit of about 172... about a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. So over the seven-year period of this economic development assistance, the city would realize a net benefit of almost one point two million dollars.
All right, and I just wanted to bring those up for the council, particularly to talk about the fact that this is a twenty-five million dollar investment for the city as a whole. And the net new tax dollars, meaning someone's coming in, they're gonna spend twenty-five million dollars based upon the new taxes created, we're setting aside five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for the city to have a parking lot made for city employees to park their vehicles, who will then free up a parking deck where we will then lease those spaces back out, and the city will again make about ninety-seven thousand dollars a year on lease payments for the parking spaces in the deck itself. Sounds like a pretty good deal. I know we have some heartburn on the fact around the parking lot, and we won't hold on to that for a permanent basis, but it seemed the best bet for us to move with this. And so with that said, I move for approval of this item.
Thank you, sir. Second? Second. In discussion? Not. All those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. And anyone opposed, vote no. That's unanimous. Thank you, Councilman Montgomery. We'll now go to the general agenda, which is comprised of the following items: an annexation petition, an item related to the sale of city-owned property, a motion to excuse Councilmember Taylor from voting on an item, an item related to an access easement, a motion to excuse Councilmember Montgomery from voting on an item, a project budget ordinance amendment, an item regarding a co-applicant for a grant, and three items related to appointments to boards and commissions, as well as to public comment period. The annexation item is listed as a public hearing, and when this public hearing is called, persons in the council chamber will be given an opportunity to speak. If no one wishes to speak, we'll close the public hearing, and the city council will consider the item. Councilmembers, without objection, I'd like to move item G seven up to the first order of business. As you know, this grant application must be submitted tonight by midnight, and the, the staff and so on who's working on this needs to pull together all the items there. So without objection, doing that, all right. So we'll now go to item G seven.
Item G seven. Resolution authorizing the city of Winston-Salem to be a co-applicant in the submission of a U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development two thousand and eighteen Choice Neighborhoods Implementation Grant Application with the Housing Authority of Winston-Salem located in the East and Northeast Wards.
Good afternoon.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. Before you is a significant opportunity to create some transformative change in the Northeast Ward and spill over into the East Ward as well with this Choice Neighborhood Implementation Grant Opportunity. As was stated, the application is due tonight, and so I'm here before you to kind of give a brief overview of what we're looking at in terms of potential city commitments and investments in this opportunity. And then I will yield the floor to Mr. Larry Woods, who's the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of Winston-Salem, as well as Mr. Keith Brown, who is here from McCormick Barron Salazar, who will be the developers on the project. A brief overview of the commitments that we're proposing tonight is, previously last year, if you'll recall, there was a three million dollar CDVG commitment that was made to be invested over the period of the grant, which was approximately six years. We are, again, asking to renew that commitment, that same three million CDVG, but we're also asking for a commitment of another three million dollars in home funds, which can be used throughout the entire project area to help promote homeownership. And so, again, a recommitment of the three million dollars that was brought before you last year of community development block grant dollars, and a new commitment of three million dollars to provide homeownership opportunities for approximately seven homeowners, the majority of whom would come from these, this development site when the redevelopment of Cleveland Avenue Homes takes place. With that, I would like to then turn it over to Mr. Larry Woods and Mr. Keith Brown.
Mr. Mayor, point of order?
Yes, I guess.
I think there may have been a mistake and a misspeaking, and I just want to make sure people are clear that we're not talking about seven houses.
Yeah.
I said sixty.
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 Yeah, but you said seven.
I said seven? Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, I just.
Oh, no, oh, my word. I apologize for that statement, sixty, six-zero.
I didn't want anyone running away with that number.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that correction, I'm sorry.
Mr. Woods?
Good evening, my name is Larry C. Woods, I'm the Chief Executive Officer for the Housing Authority, City of Winston-Salem. And once again, I'd like to thank this opportunity that the city council is bringing forth to this with our agency to partner with the city to try to make major improvements to both the East and Northeast Wards. Just a brief history, as you know, several years ago, the Housing Authority used its own funds to develop what we call the Cleveland Avenue Neighborhood Transformation Plan. That plan was well received by the Planning Department, as well as city council, as well as the Fortside County Board of Commissioners. We then went ahead and we were asked by HUD to submit for a, a planning grant from HUD to tweak our, our transformation plan to better fit into one of their grant applications, which we did, and we got a very good review on that one. The following year, the next year, we actually did submit an application, but we did not submit it in a manner that allowed it to be graded. Last year, we then retweaked that application, and we made all the necessary thresholds, but we did not score high enough to be considered for a grant. This year, after Kevin Chester has taken a look at our grant application, and through some discussions, and through word of mouth, McCormick Barron gave us a call and asked could they come in and take a look at our grant application, and we were very happy to see them coming in. They have received a total of eleven to twelve of these Choice Neighborhood Implementation Grants throughout the country. So they're batting pretty much a hundred percent. They looked at our application and felt that there was enough good meat on the bones for them to consider working with us in the future and putting together a, a new application, just through some tweaking and some enhancements. And so with that, they came in, and we're about to, hopefully with the support of the city, is to resubmit again for a third time, and we believe this one will be the charm. The bulk of the grant award will be spent on the Cleveland Avenue development itself. It will include the demolition, the raising of the buildings, and the, and the rebuilding of brand-new rental and homeownership units, as well as providing a host of supportive services that will hopefully help the residents of that community and well beyond its boundaries. The technical and soft side services, I'm gonna ask Mr. Keith Brown of McCormick Barron, if you have any questions for him, and Ms. Esther Chin, who is the CEO of Urban Strategies. They are partners in this development, they have worked in, in all the cities that McCormick Barron has received these grants, and they have been able to pull together a host of services in this agency. And I think you'd be very impressed and, and pleased with what they've done thus far. Kevin Chester is here as my General Counsel and Vice President of Development, and he will also, if you have any questions for him, he'll make himself available. Keith?
Keith Brown, if you could give your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of council, my name is Keith Brown. I live in Atlanta, Georgia, five oh two West Wabash Avenue. My name is Keith Brown, I serve as the Vice President of Business Development for McCormick Barron Salazar. I would like to take some time to share with you information about our firm, our capacity and how we intend to work with the Winston-Salem community to secure the Choice Neighborhood Grant. McCormick Barron Salazar was incorporated in nineteen seventy-three and has distinguished itself as a nationally recognized for-profit residential development company specializing urban neighborhood revitalization. The company has a hundred and ninety-one projects, including nineteen, over nineteen thousand homes and one point four million square feet of retail commercial space, with total development costs in excess of three point seven five billion dollars. We have developed properties in forty-five cities and twenty-five states, including U.S. Virgin Islands, as well as Puerto Rico. McCormick Barron Salazar has extensive experience working with local housing authorities to assist with the design and implementation of site control and site acquisition strategies. We've also focused in nineteen eighty-four, we had a focus to begin concentrating our development efforts on neighborhoods rather than single buildings. In order to have real impact on revitalization of our, of a community, redevelopment has to encompass a critical mass of housing, infrastructure, and public improvements that generate new vitality and growth. We are the housing developer in twelve Choice Neighborhood Implementation Efforts, with Choice Grants totaling more than three hundred million dollars. Those cities include New Orleans, San Antonio, Columbus, San Francisco, Memphis, Louisville, St. Louis, Atlanta, Sacramento, Pittsburgh, Tulsa, and Baltimore. McCormick Barron has extensive experience working alongside public entities in a variety of capacities, sponsors, lenders, and partners. We have skill, we have skills that utilize scarce public resources to leverage significant private investment that will ultimately drive the financing of development. Further, McCormick Barron is also expert at attracting institutional and philanthropic resources to support redevelopment efforts. For all mixed-income public housing developments, McCormick Barron Salazar has partnered closely with housing authorities throughout each phase of development, including planning, development, and operations. Because our, our McCormick Barron management side of the business was founded in nineteen seventy-three, and currently manages thirty-two thousand five hundred units that we have developed, and thirty, and three hundred and thirty-one properties in twenty-five states. Sixty percent of those properties are affordable, including Public Housing Authority, Litek or Long-Term Housing Tax Credit, and Section Eight. Five percent are market rate, and thirty-five percent are mixed income. MBM is affiliate of McCormick Barron and manages the vast majority of our properties, as well as we have a McCormick Barron Asset Management Company as well. Another aspect of our organization is MBS Urban Initiative, CDE. It is an affiliate of McCormick Barron, and it focuses on development and deployment of new market tax credits. We have deployed approximately three hundred and fifty million dollars in new market tax credit allocations across the country since two thousand and six. Urban Initiatives has closed forty-six new market tax credit transactions, including seven new market tax credit transactions closed with third-party allocation. It has developed three hundred and thirty-two million dollars of new market tax credit in projects to close financing gaps and enable more than one billion dollars of high-impact developments in deeply distressed neighborhoods to become a reality. In addition to that, we have been able to support the construction of eighty-four point six million square feet of manufacturing space, sixty-two point seven square feet of office space, and forty-two million square feet of retail space. Interestingly enough, we've been able to support through that effort, in nineteen seventy-eight, our founder, Richard Barron, who's also served as the Chairman of McCormick Barron, he founded Urban Strategies, which is an independent national non-for-profit planning organization, and is a leader in the field of community development, supporting more than thirty thousand low-to-moderate income families and approximately a hundred thousand individuals. We do this over thirty communities in fourteen major metropolitan areas. Urban Strategies works with long-term urban neighborhoods that are slated for physical revitalization, to plan for human capital development, social economic development, and the building of social capital. Urban Strategies serves as the people lead in this Choice Neighborhoods effort, and Esther Shin behind me, she serves as the President and CEO of Urban Strategies, and she will be presenting this evening to respond to, delve deeper into the people component. From an expanded boundary perspective, McCormick Barron evaluates the previous approved planning grant, the two previously submitted applications, and the debrief results from HUD to develop a comprehensive strategy. We also consider the boundary map, potential leverage dollars, community stakeholder commitments, and internal city and housing authority resources. Based on our experience with the Choice Neighborhoods program, there was a recommendation that we expand the boundary and engage a broader stakeholder community group for leverage and commitment opportunities. Within the Choice NOFA, HUD identifies eligible neighborhoods as those neighborhoods with at least twenty percent of the residents estimated to be in poverty, or have extremely low incomes based on the most recent census tract. In addition, neighborhoods that are experiencing distress related to high income or high vacancy. HUD requires that we utilize a HUD mapping tool that we, that will overlay the locally-defined neighborhood strategies and boundaries, and HUD would calculate the poverty rate, the extremely low income rate, and residential vacancy rates for the target area, as well as other measures of distress. In utilizing the mapping tool, we evaluated various boundary considerations, as we are attempting to identify the acceptable and eligible boundary for the neighborhood. Based on multiple iterations and multiple efforts, we were able to finalize an approved boundary map that would be acceptable to HUD to submit with this application, if we are allowed to do so. We utilized all these efforts to develop the housing plan. So I will talk through the housing plan now. This was developed in partnership with residents, stakeholders, and local partners beginning in two thousand and thirteen. Addresses the challenge by replacing two hundred and forty-four distressed public housing units with three hundred and fifty-one high-quality mixed-income units in a walkable resilient community. The plan deconcentrates neighborhood poverty and provides for choice for families. Through the use of physical one-for-one replacement exemption available for the Winston-Salem Choice Neighborhood for seventy-one families, with a robust plan to place them in new market-rate apartments in the neigh, within the neighborhood. The neighborhood plan also provides attainable homeownership opportunities for the neighborhood and families through partnership with Habitat for Humanity, and we also will be working with other nonprofit affordable housing, homeownership development partners as well. The hundred billion dollar housing plan will be implemented by McCormick Barron, that, which is, will, we will serve as a housing implementation entity. We are responsible for planning, designing, constructing the new housing, and will provide the developer and operating guarantees, and receive the developer fees for all phases described. McCormick Barron Management and affiliate of McCormick Barron Salazar will serve as the property manager, and McCormick Barron Asset Management will serve as the asset manager. Our nationally acclaimed cross-street partners will serve as our consultants with the project, providing the development team with local expertise and deep understanding of the market and community. The Housing Authority of Winston-Salem will be the lead applicant and the project sponsor, and will be a part in all phases and will serve as the CNI grant administrator. The City of Winston-Salem, if allowed, will partner as a public investor. Gershaman Mortgage has committed twelve point seven five million dollars in first mortgage financing. Grup Properties, Golar CDC, and Habitat for Humanity will be strong partners in the neighborhood plan, and we will work closely with other housing teams to help residents maximize their housing choices throughout. With commitments and the planned funds, there is no projected gap in the project. The Housing Authority will, will maintain site control for all replacement housing parcels. The housing plan consists of four phases of mixed income, multifamily housing with a range of incomes that will include subsidized, tax credit, and market rate. Each phase also combines a blend of resources, including the CNI dollars, the funds, private debt, private long-term housing tax credit equity, and other public resources, if provided for this evening. Thereby creating a strong financial underpinning support through the development lifecycle. All units will be in a neighborhood-appropriate two- and three-story townhouse walk-up and mixed-use building style. To provide for a longer-term choice for families and to deconcentrate poverty on the site without increasing density, the plan uses the one-for-one replace, uh, physical replacement exemption available to place seventy-one of the two hundred and forty-four subsidized units with housing choice vouchers. In addition, as outlined in the neighborhood plan, the city will partner, and, and we will look at other opportunities, with Habitat for Humanity with a goal of providing approximately sixty homes with the neighborhood, thirty of which we target to the residents of Cleveland Avenue. We would also evaluate other home building partners throughout the lifecycle of the grant. Fulfilling a key commitment to the residents and the nonprofits serving them, residents with housing choice vouchers will also have opportunities to use their vouchers within other market-rate apartment buildings in the neighborhood, including properties developed by Grubbs and Golar. Families that choose to leave the neighborhood with the vouchers will retain access to case management, and will be given counseling, recommendations in order to place them in neighborhoods in, of, of, neighborhoods of opportunity. So what I'm gonna do now is provide just the existing bedroom platform. The existing bedroom units include twenty-eight one-bedroom units, a hundred and twenty-two bedroom units, sixty-eight three-bedroom units, thirty-eight four-bedroom units, which is a total of two hundred and forty-five tot, hard units. The new proposed bedroom mix includes one bedroom, which will include a total of twenty-one bedroom units, and that is eighteen, eighteen replacement, which are housing choice vouchers, as well as ten replacement of hard units. For the two units, two-bedroom units, there will be a total of a hundred and twenty bedroom units, of which a hundred will be replacement directly on the site, and twenty replacement housing choice vouchers. For the three-bedroom units, they propose a sixty-eight total three-bedroom units, where forty-three will be total replacement on, on the site, and twenty-five replacement housing choice vouchers. And then for the four-bedroom units, will be, it will be a total of twenty-eight units, with twenty replacement directly on the site, and eight replacement of housing choice vouchers. So as a result, there are four hundred and nineteen total onsite family replacement units, and a hundred and sixty-five total housing choice vouchers, which totals, in that regard, five hundred and eighty-four total units. We anticipate achieving the unit development goal by a phasing and mixed-income development approach that will occur over four phases. The first phase is an eighty-two unit, four percent Litek deal meant to kick off a jumpstart the transformation with a viable... the transformation with a visible investment that immediately provides for the needs of all residents and community within the community building. Market-rate amenities that would include a fitness center, business center, swimming pool, and management office. Would also contain townhouses, garden, and walk-up units, and with a community space. Twenty-seven universally-designed elevator building, and also because the four-percent LIHTC is a non-competitive enrolling in North Carolina, as Phase One tax credit application can be submitted upon notice of grant award. So that is something that can be communicated and engaged in fairly quickly. Phase Two is a nine-percent long-term housing tax credit phase that will be developed contemporaneously with Phase One. It includes eighty-nine mixed-income units in townhouses, gardens, walk-ups, and a large central park that will connect all phases as well as connect to the vendor market on the west end of the neighborhood. Phase Three has ninety mixed-income units in townhouse, walk-up, and garden apartments. And then Phase Four, which is the final phase of the housing plan, will have with ninety townhouses, garden, mixed-income units financed through nine-percent LIHTC equity, and this will be the Fort and Door community for Cleveland Avenue. So of the total three hundred and fifty-one units to be developed, a hundred and seventy-three units will be replacement units via project-based vouchers, as I mentioned before, and of those hundred and seventy, and of the remaining hundred and seventy-eight, affordable LIHTC, there will be sixty percent of AMI, and a hundred and eight at thirty-one percent, and the remaining will be market rate. That really outlines our housing plan. What I would like to do is introduce Esther Shin, who is the president and CEO of Urban Strategies, to present a summary review of the people strategy and the people plan.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Shin, if you could be as brief as possible on this.
Certainly. I want to get to the application. Good evening. Thank you so much, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members, for the opportunity to share with you a little bit about Urban Strategies, because I think that that's most important, is for you to get familiar with us so that you're comfortable and ensure that we're good stewards of the grants should we be successful. We are a forty-year-old national nonprofit based out of St. Louis, Missouri. We currently have offices in fourteen major metropolitan areas and twenty-seven communities, of which eleven are Choice Neighborhood communities for implementation. We've been successful in with those eleven Choice Neighborhood sites, as the people lead in all eleven, and the neighborhood lead in two of the eleven. The thirty million dollars for each city, we've been able to support the leverage of over two billion dollars' worth of investment into these communities, and these investments are primarily in-kind through partnerships with local communities. We're kind of like a national intermediary. We focus on everything that's non-bricks-and-mortar, so early childhood, cradle-to-college career, economic mobility, making certain that young people have access to real youth development opportunities, physical, mental, behavioral health programs. We are there to ensure that services are coordinated in such a way that families that want to stay in the neighborhood have the ability to do so and are active participants in the planning and implementation process, and that means empowerment and capacity building. We are not a direct provider of services. We are a coordinator. We help raise dollars and resources. As a national nonprofit, we have access and relationships with a number of national foundations, and so we leverage that to bring resources to the local communities in which we serve. And we really see residents at the heart of the community engagement process, and so in partnership with residents and in partnership with public and private partners, aim to not only, to make certain that families are not only stable, but they are also thriving.
Thank you, Ms. Shin.
And if I could, I'd like to confirm that the CDBG investment that I spoke of earlier will be used for infrastructure, and that money will be invested and confined to the site of the project. So we intend to limit the footprint of the utilization of those dollars that we will be committing to the actual project site, and I wanted to make sure that I reaffirmed that that was the commitment on our part.
Thank you. Any questions of any of the staff?
When we started off with this project, you stated that it would be in the northeast ward, the majority of it. And then when I got today, the mayor spoke with me about this particular project at the end of the day, just about, and then the city manager and the community development director spoke with me about it, about the change. Now, anytime you allow someone to come here, you did a good report, Mr. Brown, but you didn't have any type of map or anything to show where you're talking about. Is it anywhere that we can see all this that you're talking about? I would feel better if I could see the areas.
Can you do it north or south?
North, south. A little disoriented here.
There you go.
Through the mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of council. So essentially, when we evaluated the initial map that was presented in the previous applications, we had to look at stakeholder involvement, engagement, and the opportunity to leverage funding opportunities to help support the grant initiative. As we pulled and evaluated the opportunities to leverage stakeholders, the HUD mapping tool also requires us to maintain a sense of the poverty balance. So that is why essentially when you see the extension to the north, but you also see kind of an extension of the mapping boundary to the southwest quadrant, so that we can essentially manage, based on the HUD mapping tool requirements, a balance of the appropriate poverty rate and assessment.
Also, when I look at, some other language has been added, and I'm not assured until I see that language that's added in there, that it is a guarantee. Now, you also added some other places, and you need to give those places that you've added, because when we were talking, I didn't hear anything about this, and then today I hear that this is going to be the...
Yes, ma'am. Through the mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of council. So the thought process is that we intend, the first step is to submit the grant, and that has to occur this evening. The HUD site visit will occur within six months. We intend to engage comprehensively and on a long-term, consistent basis with the expanded boundary stakeholders that are involved and engaged in this process. So I would say that at this stage, we have done a lot to really kind of evaluate the existing stakeholders who've been engaged, but as it relates to the expanded boundary, we definitely intend to spend more time engaging those respective stakeholders and really tweaking the plan so that it's appropriate for this community engagement effort.
Now, I used to teach and I used to counsel. Now, you have not given me the areas that you have included.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. So the points of interest, it occurs from, of course, it includes the Cleveland Avenue neighborhood. It takes into consideration East End, the Winston-Salem State University, and it borders all the way over to the left to Old Salem Road.
Did I hear anything about Skalen?
Skalen?
Skalen Village.
Skalen Village.
It's on the south. Skalen Village is not part of the plan.
It's not. Well, would you just give me the plan, so I'll know what we're talking about?
We're talking about at the north end, again, the new property at the Houser Thirty Purchase, which was the Hope Village, which now we call Fairview Landing. It also includes Cleveland Avenue Homes, the entire parcel. It then moves all the way down to MLK, that would include all the properties within there, and also it moves to the west side along, on the railroad line, on the west side, come all the way down to Old Salem until we get into the Happy Hill Community, which is the south boundaries, then going back up to Winston-Salem State, and then going on the east end, going straight back up to Cleveland Avenue Homes, which will include some existing properties owned by Metropolitan Church and some other housing in there that we hope will be part of the development, but leveraged, not with the grant, but leveraged with other funds.
Yeah. Skyland?
You said my Skyland Village?
Sky... It's over there near the college. Are we still talking about that, Skalen?
Is it Skalen or Skyline?
It's in the southernmost area of the...
If you talk about Skyland, Skalen is in there.
It used to be called something else, but they changed it from that. It's always been Skalen. Yes. When you started off, when you made your first presentation to us, you mentioned about the neighborhood of choice.
Yes, ma'am.
You had something different. You had, it wasn't quite, it's not quite like I hear this evening.
That's correct.
And I'm not so sure you're talking about it has to be voted on tonight.
That's correct.
Well, it may not be voted on tonight if I don't have a clear understanding of what you're going to put in the northeast ward. Now, you've got these different stakeholders. You have the, name your stakeholders. I need to know the stakeholders.
So on the people's side, there are over two dozen stakeholders. There's Boys and Girls Club, there's the United Way, there's Winston-Salem University, there is Forestsith, a community technical college, there is Big Brothers Big Sisters, there's Wake Forest Medical Center, and a whole number of hosts of others that are not coming to my mind at this very moment. I will, I think it's important to share all the information, and as of about three weeks ago, I don't think any of us, even Urban Strategies, knew that we were going to be assisting in the submission of a Choice Neighborhoods grant for Winston-Salem. We received some intel that this year would not be a very crowded year for submissions, but next year would be, and so I know that there had been some discussions about possibly submitting next year, but given that the field would be much more crowded and this year would be very, very thin, might be a really good shot at getting the thirty million dollars. So that's one critical piece. Two, you know, with these applications, there are, you know, some technical things that HUD requires, and one is demonstrating severely distressed communities, and the original target area was unfortunately not distressed enough, and so the boundaries had to be changed in order to meet threshold. As Mr. Wood said, there are certain threshold requirements that if they are not met immediately, HUD will not even read your application, and so there was fear that we would not meet threshold. To your question about stakeholders, we have a number of them at the table, and unfortunately, given our current time constraints, as Keith said, hopefully we'll have six months between now and a site visit to get extremely well-acquainted with the stakeholders, and, you know, it's unfortunate that we have to, we're talking about this backwards. That's not ideal, and, you know, given that there is this potential opportunity, you know, it's, hopefully, you know, the community sees it as one of a good investment.
Thank you. I just want to, excuse me, Councilmember Burke, thank you. I just want to make clear that the Cleveland Avenue Homes and the New Hope Village is where the thirty-million-dollar grant, if we get it, plus the three-million dollars of CDBG will be expended.
Yes.
Will be expended no place else.
That's correct.
Thank you.
That's guaranteed, yes.
Now, yes, I would like to see that in writing, because at the expense sometimes of poor people, we bring in funds and sometimes they don't benefit. I've said to this city, and he's the only one who knows, if it's a city with me, I don't care if it's a hundred thousand people sitting in here, if it's something I believe in, I believe in it, and I represent people, and I would not have the kind of conscience to say that the poor, these two neighborhoods, these two cities we have in Winston-Salem that some of y'all don't know about, we have one part of a city where people are doing poor, living less than how humans ought to live in this great city of Winston-Salem, and I need to see what you are talking about. Say what?
Except if the city manager can respond to that.
All right, somebody needs to respond.
Mr. Garrett.
Mayor Protem, Mayor Burke, members of the city council. We've been working late this afternoon, talking to each one of you about this potential opportunity, which is a great opportunity if we can get this grant for the Cleveland Avenue area. There are three potential changes that I would like to ask our community development director to go over with you for potential changes and resolution to address the concerns. That number one change she's going to mention is making it clear in writing where the money will be spent.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Protem, council members. So again, one of the additional items of language that we proposed to be added to what was originally put into the CARF and a potential resolution is, and I'll quote, "The CNI grant and three million dollars of CDBG investment will only be expended in and confined to the Choice Neighborhood Implementation Project Site." So again, that...
Which is what?
That is the Cleveland Avenue Homes and New Hope Village.
Is that written in there?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. It is in a new proposed CARF and resolution.
Go over the other two changes.
And another change was, you heard a lot of talk about Habitat for Humanity and a tie of the sixty homes for homeownership with Habitat for Humanity. The proposed change in that language is, and I'll quote, "Confirmation that three million dollars in home funds will be allocated to local nonprofit developers for the development of sixty homes for homeownership in the CNI, or Choice Neighborhood Implementation, target area." So that was the second change, to remove any reference to Habitat for Humanity and make it local nonprofit developers. So that provides an opportunity for others who are developing in and around the Cleveland Avenue Homes to also have an opportunity to participate in providing some of those homeownership opportunities. The last change that was made, there was a mention earlier or a request that we include information regarding a potential TIF that has been deleted. So in the original CARF, if I could switch to that page real quickly, bear with me, please, there was a final bullet that mentioned consideration of utilizing a community-based tax increment financing mechanism to cover additional public needs in the CNI area. That was completely removed from the new proposed CARF and resolution.
Read that, the one just before that one. Say that one again.
The one about Habitat or this one?
The one that you read just before and after you read Habitat, I do believe.
Okay. Consideration of utilizing a community-based tax increment financing mechanism to cover additional public needs in the Choice Neighborhood Implementation area. That was taken out of the new proposed language that we would like to offer tonight. So there would be no consideration of a TIF.
Yeah, I had a...
Okay. So I'm going to talk to him too, but somebody else.
I have a comment, a question. Just let me ask the question quick. What is the timeframe? I know you mentioned HUD will be in in the next six months, but if we get it, how many, I'm assuming it's years?
Six years.
Six years.
So it runs through twenty-four.
Yeah. And I'll comment briefly what I think Mr. Burke's alluding to. We're taking a lot on faith here. This was news to all of us today, but thirty million dollars is a lot of money. If we got to get a form in by midnight, we will get it in, I hope. But I would expect, Mr. Garrity, after the fact that we would, and not necessarily next week, but at some appropriate time, we would have a very detailed presentation to the, I'm not sure what committee it would be, maybe General Government or something, detailing the neighborhoods, and Mr. Brown mentioned all sorts of different apartments and townhomes and things like that, just a lot more information. And I just trust the staff and the folks working on this that we will do it right. We tend to, but there is a great deal of information, which Mrs. Burke's alluding to, that we just don't have. But I also understand that if we don't turn something in by midnight, we're not, we will not have a shot at thirty million dollars.
Councilmember Montgomery.
A couple points of clarity, hopefully. As I listen here and the conversation that have happened, we're at this point because of the fact that initially, the Winston-Salem Housing Authority, Housing Authority of Winston-Salem, in consultation, originally decided not to apply for this round of funding. That was the decision originally, that they were not going to apply for funding this round, because they were going to work with the same group to make a better application for next year. As they were going through, as... As they were going through, as, as the McCormick Baron and Salazar was going through consultation with HUD, during those conversations with, with individuals in that process, it became apparent that there was likely a great opportunity this year rather than waiting. And that came at the 11th .59 hour in terms of when that could possibly be submitted. And so from my understanding, it was not until last week that local individuals were contacted to begin to try to put this application together. And all of this happened on, to try to pull all this information together to submit an application based upon what the community had already been informed on. What, what you're receiving tonight and what you're hearing tonight is the fact that this is not our normal process of how we do things. The normal process is that this would have been specifically vetted through committee, through community forms and conversations, but for the lack of the timeframe associated with this, it did not allow it, the opportunity to be able to come through a committee setting. And based upon the, the mapping, the reason that the map, and somebody, I will look to the folks who we work with to correct me, based upon the extension of the map, that the areas that are included in the map are not necessarily areas, are not areas that will directly benefit from the dollars that have been discussed today. Those areas have been included in the map to help the Cleveland Avenue area that we all had, already had discussions about. The reason that it was extended was because, if this council remembers, at the last meeting when Mr. Woods and others came forward, they stated that many of the other communities had hundreds of millions of dollars pledged in, in leverage towards the development areas, and we had a very small amount. By extending the boundaries, they now take the investment of those other areas and count it towards leverage for the 30 million in that community. So in essence, the areas that are now included are helping to get the $30 million to be invested in the specific area. And so without including those additional areas, you're unable to have the leverage that puts the application in a place where it is in contention and has a competitive advantage. So the other wards, other neighborhoods, other communities are now joining in essentially in helping to get those funds to be invested in that neighborhood. Is that correct?
Correct.
Now I need a new job. But, and I say that to say that because I, I don't believe that that, that was clear to, to folks to understand. You see this new picture, folks have no idea what's happening in those areas. They believe that now the community was essentially sold on a vision for the Cleveland Avenue area and how those community members would benefit. And then now you see a new map and it's, so what, what's going to happen? Where are those funds? By including the language that was specifically stating about where the funds will be spent, I think should help the community understand where those dollars would be spent. But none of these funds get spent without additional conversation. There's a lot of details that have to get vetted and there's a period of time that allows for, for the community to have additional conversation and to button down some specifics within this. With that in mind, to, the last two times, we have not been successful. And we've been at this place before, so I think to be able to move forward with this, to at least see if we're able to be successful in this is advantageous for the community, especially understanding that the funds will still be expended in the same area, but the boundaries have been expanded to help benefit that part of the community.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes, again, this is unusual, but it happens. We're talking about an opportunity to leverage $30 million from the federal government that we can now go do something. We need stakeholders. We need public-private partnerships now. As I've said before, government is not going to do the heavy lift for everything. You got to go get other people to help leverage so we can put the right community development in the Cleveland Avenue area. And that's important. But again, the thing that we need to focus on, don't get me wrong, we already applied twice. Same application. But we got a little bit of help from people to help us enhance our application so we'd have a chance of maybe getting in. Unlike, this is HOPE 6 on steroids. Am I right? It's a new generation of how you do economic development in partnership with the Housing Authority and others. If we don't get the application in by midnight, then we'll just be applying next year when everybody else applies. But I can tell you this, if somebody at the top of the food chain said like they told us to apply for their FEMA grant, like they told us to apply for the CHAMP grant, sometimes you get a heads up that you might have a chance of getting this grant this time if you just apply and expand the area. But the money the city is going to get and the money that we're investing will be strictly in the Cleveland Neighborhood Project area. So what I want everybody to understand is if we don't do this tonight, then we'll just work on it next year, Mr. Wood. And thank you all for being here, you nice folk who got this track record. But I'm just being real, we can tweak this thing. We just need to get the application in with the changes that Ms. Newman spoke about. And we got six months. We already had the meetings with the Cleveland Neighborhood folk. Now we got to go and get the other folk. We can invite Atkins CDC, we can bring in the Gola CDC, we can bring in all of these other CDCs to help make this happen. But we got to do this now. But if we don't do it, and then we got six years to make it happen. I forgot what the, the timeline was, Mayor Protim and Mayor on HOPE 6, our first project. How many years did it take us to get from start to even somewhat through with that deal?
Yeah, it was at least two and a half, three years.
Three years. Well, we got six years to really get this thing done right this time, for real. So I'm just employing the council and others to, let's get this done, people. I mean, it's another thing to tell our people that we don't apply, and then we hear maybe Greensboro or Durham got the money and we didn't. You can't get it if you don't apply for it. You got to try, okay?
Councilmember Larson, and then of course, Councilmember Burke.
Simply said, simply said, we need to be nimble. We have an opportunity. I think Councilmember Montgomery outlined the situation that we're in. Clearly, we've tried twice before, third time at bat, we've got to succeed. We've got a new team. We've got new expertise. We've modified our application to be more inclusive, to show what the city is already investing in, in these areas and in the, in the whole development area. So I would make a motion of approval. All right, we'll try.
This is what I'm going to say. Everything all of you who have spoken, I understand clearly. I also know that you can make commitments. Is something funny attorney sitting out there? Just, just, don't turn your head with the, with yellow towel.
Oh, oh, excuse me, Madam, Mayor Protim, I, I thought your comment about the, the motion coming from you was.
Well, sit down. Now let me say this so you can clearly understand. I have sat on this council long enough to listen to a lot of people. I've had summaries, we used to have John DeFries, he would always give us a summary, as if though we didn't know how to summarize ourselves. I've had people say, if we don't do it tonight, we may not ever. I've heard everything that you were saying. I would be less than elected official if I would let this go by and not even ask questions. I would not need to represent people if I felt I need to go along with someone without a clear understanding. I do not feel that when things are presented to us that I have a right with an opinion to agree or disagree with you and you and you. And I don't think any of you can think any better than I can think. I don't think any of you have anything more to offer than I offer. And I'm disappointed in some of you because it seems as if though you don't want us to take the time so that the people can get a clear understanding of what you want to vote on tonight. I could just merely say those two words and we wouldn't vote on a thing, and it was just going to be out until next year. At, in this city, we have poor people who don't have a voice. We've had some to come down to try to be their voice, but I don't know, it's guaranteed they can be their voice. We need to at times see the folks we're talking about. The people sitting over there in Cleveland Public Housing, a lot of them have not even attended one of the meetings. They have not even felt a need because they have not felt that they need to be there. Also, I've sat on this council, and I've heard councilmembers say, it'll be a new group and we can vote another way. So I'm saying to the attorney, you've heard this conversation here this evening. With this, talking about more of this money, that 30 million will go into Cleveland Public Housing for the housing that I've heard the community director talked about and also Mr. Brown talk about. What really assurance, when you say that this 30 million, did you say 30 million?
Yes, ma'am.
Dollars? What assurance we really have that will go in Cleveland Public Housing and New Hope Manor?
If I might add, and certainly someone can, can reiterate, we have to sign a variety of certifications and assurances when this application is filed with HUD. So we are attesting when that application goes in, that what we are proposing is true and correct, and that is in fact a plan that we intend to follow. So if we were to in any way veer from the plan that was presented from HUD, there could be consequences for us as a community. So we have to sign on the dotted line. Actually, the city manager will be signing. The mayor has to do a letter. There are a whole host of other certifications that have to accompany this. So that is what holds our feet to the fire because it's what we tell HUD we, we intend to do.
Attorney, thank you.
Mayor Protim Burke, so this is the application process. And from what all I've heard tonight, this is not the grant of the award, but an effort to get the award. And the agreement that we sign now is for the application. And then once we receive, if we are so lucky to receive, there'll be a process at that point. But what has been represented is on a record. We have made a record of what has been said, though we have changed. And there are writings to support what are being presented to you tonight. So as I heard it, there was a refinement of what was presented to narrow the, the spend, if you will, the spend of the funds for our purposes to two key areas, which would be New Hope Manor and would also be Cleveland Avenue area. The, the map which was presented did cover a larger area, but as I understand it, the spend will be confined to those two key areas that are identified. And that has been represented by both the verbal record that we have created, sort of a legislative history, and also by changes to the application agreement that we are being, that we have. And then if we are selected, there'll be a further agreement.
And we will have how many years to, for this project?
Six. Six years.
Some of us not going to be sitting up here six years from now. But Mr. City Manager, you need to address.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. The Cleveland Avenue area, the, the original study area, if you look at any indicator of distress in our community, unfortunately, that area leads. Crime, poverty, social services, every indicator, and we have that mapped. That area leads. And I have spent a good part of my career trying different options to address the quality of life or the lack of quality of life in that area. You've got my assurance, if I'm here and based on this council, that money will be spent there, or we, I won't sign anything. That's the intent, that's the intent of HAWS, to improve the quality of life in the most distressed neighborhood in Winston-Salem.
Now, again, this evening, if this is voted on, the part about those three things that you added to this information, and also about the $30 million, you said that you would have to, are you talking about for the night or when it comes back, it's approved, that how, how assured are we of the 30 million?
The 30 million to receive or the 30 million how it would be spent?
How it will be spent.
Again, based on the application, that, that's the first swing at it. We're telling HUD, we're going to spend $30 million at Cleveland Avenue Homes and New Hope Manor. So that's the first one. Then, when they come, we would reiterate that when they come for the site visit and provide the rest of the information, do the citizen participation and the like. Should the grant be awarded, again, those grant documents to the city would articulate $30 million for the redevelopment of Cleveland Avenue Homes and New Hope Manor. So we have different steps along the way where all of that is being recorded, documented, and by the city manager, again, signing on the dotted line. He is attesting to the fact that those dollars will in fact be spent there as well as assurances and certifications that the Housing Authority will also have to sign and make its commitment to as well. So both the city and the Housing Authority, and ultimately even McCormick Baron as developer, will all be signing assurances and certifications that that is in fact how those dollars will be spent.
That is after it is passed? After it comes from, after we, if it passes tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Then in that, it says the 30 million?
Yes, ma'am.
That is the assurance?
That is the first assurance. There will be multiple assurances.
I'm thinking about the second one. That's what's concerning me.
That, that comes with the grant. First, we have to demonstrate to them what the plan is when they come for the site visit. So that would involve them actually coming to see the, the development area. And the development area is Cleveland Avenue Homes and New Hope Manor. That is the site that they will be seen, be shown, I'm sorry. So that's the second step along the process of reiterating our commitment to spending those dollars at Cleveland Avenue Homes and New Hope Manor. Then should HUD decide that all of our Ts across and Is are dotted properly, and this is an appropriate use of grant funds, they will then make the grant award to us. But that requires, again, the execution of a variety of legal documents and certifications that again reiterate that those funds will be invested in those sites.
Suppose there's a new housing director and he, or she may not have that same interest.
It doesn't matter. That's what's on record. Those are the, the application went into that effect. The site visit takes place that reiterates that. And the documents that come from HUD say, this is what you've said you're going to do, and this is what we're giving you the money for. So whether, whoever's in that role is of no moment. Those documents are what's controlling.
Just as the city manager say, if he's not here?
Yes, ma'am.
The mayor may not be here. And I may not be here either. So I want to make, excuse me, were you saying something? Did anybody say anything? The attorney? Was she going to say something?
Ms. Carmen?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protim Burke and councilmembers. I would also add that the resolution itself is controlling. It specifically says it's going to be used for those two project areas, basically Cleveland Avenue and New Hope Manor. So the resolution controls as well as the legal documents.
Thank you. I want you to understand that I am not, and the citizens, I'm not thinking about what you all are understanding, but for the citizens that I represent, I would want them to understand that it's important that I have gone through this with the people involved. Because if you are elected official and you're not trustworthy and you don't care about the interests of the persons that you represent, you don't need to be here.
It's true.
So I want you to know that citizens, no matter how poor they are, they can't speak for themselves, but they are human and they are important. And the commitment should be really, if we could put it in cement, a clear understanding.
Councilmember, if you are comfortable and want to make a motion to approve the resolution subject to those three additions that Ms. Newman enumerated, then it would be appropriate if you're ready.
Well, I prayed about this. At the short time that we're doing this, I hope that haste will not be waste. I hope that the people that we are dependent getting this money from will be the people who are the poor people who cannot speak for themselves. I hope that we are committed and that we know that it is important to keep our word. So at this time, and I hope that the citizens I represent know that I did not take this lightly. As I told the city manager today, I may say no consideration on this if it's not an understanding that the $30 million will be used in the Cleveland Avenue area, the public housing there and the New Hope Manor. And I hope that is a commitment. So at this time, I will move, I will move. So at this time, I will move, I will move approval of the resolution with three changes presented by the staff tonight and repeat those three changes again.
Second, go ahead, Ms. Newman, please.
Yes, sir. The first change will read, confirmation that three million dollars in home funds will be allocated to local nonprofit developers for the development of sixty homes for ownership in the Choice Neighborhood Implementation Target Area. Second change, the Choice Neighborhood Implementation Grant and three million dollars CDBG investment will only be expended in and confined to the Choice Neighborhood Implementation Project Site. The third change is a deletion from the previous CARF and Resolution, that which will be deleted says, consideration of utilizing a community-based tax increment financing mechanism to cover additional public needs in the Choice Neighborhood Implementation Area.
Did I hear of the Cleveland, anywhere, did you repeat Cleveland Avenue and New Hope?
Yes, ma'am.
You repeated that a few minutes ago in your reading?
Just now.
They weren't called out specifically, they're the Choice Neighborhoods Target Area, so I will, we can.
I want it spelled out.
Yes, ma'am.
Because some down the way, somebody could say, we could add this or this. So if you don't spell it out.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, we will make that adjustment.
And I would expect, when are you going to make the adjustment?
As soon as I can get back to my computer.
All right, and then after you make that, city manager, I expect to see it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a circuit to approve the resolution with the addition of the three items that Ms. Newman enumerated. Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Newman, one brief question. What is the total cost to the taxpayers if this is approved to submit the grant this evening?
The cost to submit is nothing.
So when I make decisions, I weigh the benefits and consequences, and the consequences outweigh the benefits, I don't, I don't do it.
Yes, sir.
So we lose nothing if we apply?
That's correct. McCormick Baron Salazar has offered their services to help us prepare this application and submitted, they've offered that pro bono.
But there is only the ability to gain thirty million dollars if we're approved by the federal government for these particular communities that were spelled out.
That is correct, that is correct, sir.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Just a final comment. One of the things that, in particular around this group, when we've had these applications, Mr. Woods and I have had many conversations around how we process with this application. Sometimes we agree, sometimes we disagree in reference to it, but particularly one of the things in areas has been around the people. When the application came before, I was very, I pushed back in reference to how the language mentioned the individuals would be case managed and engaged specifically. Because in the work I do every day, I know there's a difference between soft touch case management and intensive case management, and how you engage with a person when they move from one place to another matters around their stability. In these neighborhoods, we have invisible networks where people depend on each other in a way in which is not clearly visible. So we have to take that into consideration when we're working with individuals to look at the invisible networks that exist. That if I'm a single parent and I have a child and Ms. Suzie down the road watches my kids for twenty-five dollars a week, when I move across the community, that changes my ability to go to work every day because I don't have her down the street to watch my child. And those are the type of things that we have to understand when we're talking about redevelopment and working. And what made me feel comfortable with this group of folks was the fact of how they look at people and the strategies associated with engaging individuals long-term and navigating those instances. The second thing is, is I think one of the things that challenges individuals around it was in reference to the changing of the boundaries and what that looks like publicly for folks. But being able to have this wording specified for people to understand that the investment of this thirty million dollars and the city's investment will be restricted to the Cleveland Avenue community and neighborhood that we've talked to the community about is great, but it also offers the opportunity for the community to understand this. For a long time, many individuals, East of Fifty-two, have looked at downtown Winston-Salem and surrounding areas and asked the question, how does the investment in these areas benefit me? How do I gain from what's happening in these other areas? Tonight, by the expansion of that boundary, you're able to benefit because now that twenty-five million dollar investment that we approve assistance to today, that has the opportunity to be leveraged to get the thirty million dollars in the Cleveland Avenue area. The eighteen million dollars invested at Union Station, it gets to get leveraged to get the thirty million dollars in Cleveland Avenue. The dollars that are being invested at Happy Hill Park to recreate that gets to get leveraged to get investment in Cleveland Avenue. The investment that we did in Bailey Power Plant and these other buildings downtown gets to get leveraged back so that we can get investment in Cleveland Avenue. For the first time, for many people, this will be the opportunity where they see firsthand where the investments in central downtown Winston-Salem directly benefits residents outside of downtown Winston-Salem. And for those who are writing the story, I hope that's how you write what we're doing tonight.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That's unanimous, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Go back now to item G1.
Item G1, consideration of items relating to a petition to annex approximately twenty-two point eight zero acres located west off of Metalark Drive, being a part of the arbors at Metalark located in the West Ward, petition of Metalark Developers LLC, recommended by the Public Works Committee. Public hearing and ordinance extending the corporate limits of the city of Winston-Salem by annexing thereto certain contiguous territory.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone in council chamber which is to be heard on this proposed petition annexation? Petitioners are here if there's any questions. So you know when I declared a public hearing closed, this did come out of Public Works, but it's also a West Ward item. I would recognize Councilmember Clark.
Thank you. This is a voluntary annexation. The landowners have asked that we accept this land into the city, and assuming that is done tonight, we will come back next month with a resolution to actually change their zoning from county zoning to city zoning. Tonight, we're simply going to hopefully approve the voluntary annexation, and I would move approval with that.
Second. Motion second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate with voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Motion's approved unanimously, we thank you. Item G2.
Item G2, resolution authorizing the sale of certain city-owned property on Eighth Street and Ninth Street under the upset bid procedure, North Carolina General Statutes one sixty-eight dash two sixty-nine, located in the north and east wards. Finance committee forwarded this item to council with three in favor, none opposed, and one abstaining.
I recognize Councilmember Clark.
Yeah, this is a motion to approve the sale of two parcels, this is surplus land up in the Ninth, Eighth and Ninth Street areas, and I would move approval.
Second. Councilmember Montgomery?
Yep, I will be making a substitute motion, it may fail, but I would not be Derwin Montgomery if I didn't make the motion, the substitute motion in this manner, particularly tonight, and I, and I know we don't want to draw the night on longer, but the same way I'm passionate about, others are passionate about items here, I'm passionate about ensuring that we properly fund and support affordable housing in this community. Tonight, we looked at, and we've already approved six hundred thousand dollars to the Peters Creek Initiative. We've also allocated additional dollars for investment to be supported from an economic development plan downtown. We set aside those funds to go directly to an effort prior to even receiving those dollars. And one of the items that I asked the finance committee to take into consideration was whether or not to set aside the funds from this sale to move them to the Housing Finance Assistance Fund, to be used towards supporting affordable housing in the community because as of date, we don't have a specific steady stream to ensure that dollars are continually funneled in that account. One of the hesitations from some is saying, well, each year we have a budget and we should allocate at that time. The fact of the matter is, is that at times when we have had budget constraints in the past, we have used funds from the Housing Finance Assistance Funds to do other things that were not housing-related. But what this would do, if we put those dollars in this fund because they're local dollars, it will require that additional step for us to be conscious about making that effort. And with that, I make a motion that we, a substitute motion, that we approve the sale contingent upon the funds being allocated to the Housing Finance Assistance Fund.
Is there a second?
I would second that motion with a comment.
Okay, Councilmember Taylor?
I would second Mr. Montgomery's motion. I am, everybody knows here, I'm an advocate and a fan of utilizing dollars created in one community and allowing those dollars to be put back in that community. I've tried to do it several times in some of the areas in the southeastern portion of the city. We see that being done in downtown, and that money continues to regurgitate itself and be used back for community economic development. So hopefully this sets a precedent, a good precedent, and I'll be supporting Mr. Montgomery's motion, failed or passed.
Mr. Burke?
I'm asking, city manager, the comment that Councilmember Taylor just made, would you address that, please? I don't quite understand. You were saying, are you saying that we are putting, you want money if something in your ward to go back in your ward? Am I misunderstanding you?
Councilmember Taylor?
That would be a semi-accurate statement.
City manager, have we, do we, I know you can always change and make things different, but let's say we're talking about everything that's being sold, like these two lots, and I believe Mr. Montgomery is saying, put it into a.
Housing Finance Assistance Funds, not just for the East Ward.
It's a semi-accurate statement.
Not just for the East Ward. If we start taking, for instance, and I ask you to check how many lots I got in my ward then, because I want mine to come back to mine if you're going to start that. And did you get a chance to check that?
Mr. Ralph prepared some of the information. I know we looked at, I don't think we got all the lots in your ward, but we did look at some examples over the last five years.
Six years.
Six years. There have been times when council has earmarked the funds from the sale of property, for instance, at Winston Lake, when we sold property across the street, there's been a couple others as well. It's varied, but the council does not have any policy on it, and I have not seen it done for operations. The other question as far as earmarking by ward and the revenues coming in, it's been specific to a specific sales of property.
Well, I would really have to think about that part.
Okay, so we do have a substitute, Councilmember Clark and then Councilmember Beth.
We just approved the annexation of land to the West Ward. I would not dream of asking this county to earmark the incremental tax coming from that. And I'm going to say that's, I'm going to look to Mr. Mike Kottas, you're the real estate expert, but I would say that land's going to have a hundred homes, give or take a few, two, three, four hundred thousand dollar homes, because that's not appropriate. Every year, we do a budget and we decide where to spend the money. And it, once we start earmarking, as long as you treat everybody the same, every time we annex some more Brookberry Farm in, let's earmark it for parks in the West Ward, I'll have the nicest parks in the world, but that's not right. We have a budget for a reason, that eight of us sit up here and decide how to spend the money each year, and I have cautioned us against specifically earmarking because the first thing you know, we've earmarked for this, that, and the other. And I have told the story to some of y'all, I'll tell it again, I used to be the chairman of a private school, and during the worst recession we had, we put a new scoreboard up in the gym, and somebody asked, why did you do that when the teachers needed more money, whatever? Well, that's because somebody gave us an earmark for a new scoreboard. It's the last thing the school needed at that time, but we had no choice but to spend it for that. And that's why I say, whenever we get money, it goes into the pot and once a year, and everybody gets input in it, and if there's any doubt that we don't share it around, we just earmark hopefully a thirty million dollar grant and another three million plus three million city money. We did. Going to the northeast ward, and that's the appropriate place to spend it, and that may be another event that's going to take place. I believe the Fifth Street project is in Mr. Montgomery's ward, and we have voted , I thought, two men or something for it, something like that, three men, I don't remember the number. But we judge things as they come, and I think this council does a very good job of treating it all fairly and what needs to be done at the time. But I just cautioned us against earmarking, first thing you know, every little penny's earmarked, end up spending money on things that aren't the most important at that time because we thought it would be.
Councilmember Beth?
Oh, he did, I didn't see his hand.
Councilmember Beth?
Thanks. Yeah, I think it's important to distinguish between what Councilmember Taylor was initiating discussion of and what's being proposed here. I actually agree with my colleague, Councilmember Clark, on this one, that we don't want to get into the habit of earmarking funds for the ward in which a sale or fees were generated, in part because I think that would work to the substantial disadvantage of poorer parts of our community. That's not what Councilmember Montgomery is suggesting here. He's suggesting that we take what in effect was a non-anticipated windfall of a little over half million dollars from the sale of this property that has no relation in and of itself to the Housing Finance Assistance Fund, but that what he's suggesting is that we, in effect, incorporate in one motion what amounts to a budget amendment that would take a little over half million dollars of revenue and put it into the Housing Finance Assistance Fund. And the rationale for that, as I understand it, is we know that we're taking money from that fund for other projects, we know it doesn't have a revenue stream, this is money that we had not anticipated nor budgeted to other things, but we have it coming in now, and so it's not inappropriate for us to say, we have what amounts to a little over half million dollars of found money in the context of this year's expenditure plan, and putting it into the Housing Finance Fund is a good use of that, of that dollars. The fact that it's coming from the sale of property on Eighth and Ninth Streets is coincidental to that purpose.
Thank you. Do have a substitute motion on the floor, Councilmember Mike Kottas.
Sorry to delay the evening, but should we all get a shot of where this found money goes? I think that's what the budget process is versus here, we're talking about one councilperson asking for that money to be spent in a specific way, whereas in the budget process, we have a pot of money that we each get to ask for, certain portions of.
All right, Councilmember Larson?
Yeah, we're getting ready to monetize an asset for the city, and that's a city asset. And usually in city allocations, council will make a decision on how to allocate that resource across. In a sense, that's what he's asking us to do tonight, he's asking us to provide a specific allocation of a resource. I'm uncomfortable with this process. I think it opens the door to all kinds of special allocations and stuff and arguments over little bits of money here and there that should be hashed out in the overall budget. I think we do not have special allocations particularly for police, fire, other major functions. We do have the opportunity, I think, to support housing, and I think this council tonight showed a great deal of interest in supporting housing, particularly in Councilmember Montgomery's ward, and I think we'll continue to do that. This little bit of money, this five hundred thousand, what we're talking about, you know, in the big picture of things, I think can set a precedent that is not worth the money that we're spending on it, and we concentrate on using the general budget process to allocate and resource manage our city budget.
Councilwoman Montgomery and then Councilmember Adams?
Just last comment, I think, again, I take, value the comments here. The council makes the decision, so one councilmember makes motions all the time, but it's the council that takes action. So this is a request to the council to take action. Unless we change our financial policies that specifies that on sale, it goes to a specific place, it goes back into the general fund for other uses. And we talked about tonight, other areas where we put funds, they came out of another designated fund. We did not take dollars from the general fund to pay for anything that we talked about tonight. Everything that we talked about tonight came from a fund that had revenue in it, and the revenue from a fund, particularly one that we're taking revenue out of, doesn't have a funding stream. So we talk about the budget process, we take funds out, we take funds and allocate them to housing specifically out of another fund. So to say that if we're going to start using general fund dollars to fund housing, I'm all for it, but that has not been the act of this council to the date that I've been on the council. So unless we're changing that policy, if that's what we're doing tonight, I'm all for it, and I say, let's do it.
Councilmember Adams?
I agree with everything Councilmember Montgomery said. We got an issue again with affordable housing. We don't have a way to fund it yet, we haven't figured out how to do that yet. We did a housing study, and yes, we do, when we're looking for money for different things that we got to have, whether it's immediate action on certain things that's got to take place, first place we look is the housing funds, you know, but we really don't have a way to make sure those funds stay there so that we can use them for what the purpose of it is. Mayor, city manager, I think one of my suggestions would be that we look at other cities to benchmark as to how they make sure that their housing funds stay sustainable and look for someone we can benchmark, and if not, that we need to look at crafting a resolution or something so that we can ensure that we are always putting money in that fund versus all of us look to take money out of it.
Thank you. We do have a substitute motion to approve the sale of these properties with the caveat that the proceeds would go into the Housing Finance Fund. All those in favor of the sub- All those in favor of the substitute motion, please indicate by voting yes. Those opposed to the substitute motion, vote no. And the motion is a, one, two, three, four, it's tied, I believe, there, and the chair will vote no in this particular case. I think we've got a big task in front of us in terms of the housing study, but I think we need to look at it in a macro way. We used to dedicate a half cent of our tax rate, for instance, to housing development. I think that's probably a good way of getting in there. So we go now back to the original motion to approve the sale of the properties as set forth. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That motion passes, so seven to one, with Councilmember Montgomery voting no. All right, thank you. Now we go to item G three.
Item G three, motion to excuse Councilmember Taylor from voting on item G four.
Move for G three.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That motion passes unanimously, so with Councilmember Taylor abstaining. Now go to item G four.
Item G four, resolution authorizing the grant of an access easement for three parcels of land locked by the city on property pursuant to NCGS 160A-273 located in the Southeast Ward. Public Works Committee forwarded this item with three in favor and unopposed and one excused.
May I have a motion on this one?
I'll move approval as the chair of the committee came out of, and just a couple words of explanation.
Thank you, sir. A second. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Best.
Yes, this is a routine access easement request that would have been on the consent agenda had we not needed to excuse one of our members from participating because he has an interest in one of the pieces of property that would be benefited, but it's not something that we would not routinely approve in similar circumstances to any citizen.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Best. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Thank you. That passes unanimously with Councilmember Taylor of being excused. Item G five.
Item G five, motion to excuse Councilmember Montgomery from voting on item G six.
Motion to approve G five.
Second. Motion second. Councilmember Montgomery.
Always like for the attorney to-
Yes, would you state the reason why Councilmember Montgomery is being excused?
So on this particular item, this involves a budget ordinance that affects funds that are funds that could be potentially distributed to the organization that Councilmember Montgomery is affiliated with, so in buns of caution, he's not going to vote on this action, so the project budget ordinance can be passed without any concern of a conflict of interest.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That passes unanimously with Councilmember Montgomery being excused. Now item G five, excuse me, G six.
Item G six, ordinance amending the project budget ordinance for the City of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for the fiscal year 2018, 2019 for federal housing funds recommended by the Finance Committee.
Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Not all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Montgomery being excused. Item G eight.
Item G eight, mayor joins recommendations for appointment to the Triad Municipal ABC Board. Damon Lindell, term expiring June 2019.
So moved. Second.
Motion second, discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Please vote yes.
I wish you-
I know. Please vote yes. Anyone opposed? That's unanimous, thank you. Is item G nine?
Item G nine, mayor joins recommendations for appointment to the Recreation and Parks Commission.
Move for approval.
Emir James C. Massaccampo and Sherry Ingram, both with terms expiring May 2021.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion second, discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That is unanimous, thank you. And next.
Item G ten, mayor joins recommendation for appointment to the Historic Resources Commission. Alana Metzler-Holderfield, term expiring June 2021.
Your motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That is unanimous, thank you. And G eleven, please.
Item G eleven, public comment period.
Since it's a time once per month where we set aside 30 minutes for members of the public to address the council on matters that are germane to city government, would ask anybody who would like to speak, and I've got some signups to come forward, give your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes, and also remind speakers to consider the decorum of this meeting and to conduct yourself accordingly. First person is Philip Summers. If you would please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, I'm Philip Summers. I brought handouts. I think it'd be really germane. Thank you. I'm Philip Summers, 2422 Peachtree Street. If you could help me pass these handouts out, and I have it here. I will be brief. I've risen before to speak on the behalf of public transit riders. One of the things that we asked for was to get into Google Maps. This analysis shows you some analysis from Google Maps on travel times. We wanted to come tonight because we believe that it's important to talk about how public transit affects our community. We also wanted to highlight the fact that we did get a grant from the North Carolina Department of Transportation for mitigation of Business 40, and so we want to show you the baseline travel times and anticipation of when the travel times will improve because you get $7 million more. When you get that $7 million more for the next two years, we'd like to see us sustain that level of funding. We think you're going to appreciate improved travel times because you have money to have increased frequencies. And so, like you see, right now, the travel times are just so long, because I've often said the buses are only running once an hour, and that's a real problem. In November, when we have more money, they're going to be running every 30 minutes, we're going to come back and we're going to show you what Google says. What you'll see on the back is per ward, to get to key health assets, how long does it take? And we grouped the health assets in a rational way, and we're trying to talk about big structural systems that help with economic mobility. And so we wanted to clothe or shed light on the current travel delays that transit-dependent folks in our community face to get to key health assets. So that's the main thrust of the paper there. The analysis just shows you how much time transit-dependent folks are spending in transit currently.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Thank you for all your hard work on this. Councilmember Taylor?
Mr. Summers, I just want to say, I appreciate you always rising and being passionate about transit in the city. I will continue to advocate for your role on the Transit Authority. Just wanted to let you know that I hadn't fallen on deaf ears, and I do continue to advocate for you to be on the Transit Authority. We need more people like you.
Michael Duette.
I thank him also.
Oh, oh.
We need-
Do you want?
So Michael DeLitt, 2707 Tudor Road. So following along with what Philip mentioned, the importance of transit to those who need it most cannot be underlined anymore. With the inclusion of the Google API, it now provides us the ability to do this kind of analysis. So this analysis is based off of 21 communities representing each of the wards, additionally focusing on those who would be most transit-dependent. However, the same kind of analysis can be done for whatever we want to do it on. So whether or not that's going to health assets, to underline the ability to go to those assets, to jobs, to work development sites, that can now be done. So it's a very powerful tool. As Philip also mentioned, now is a great time with this grant coming to actually measure the results of more frequent bus routes on our community. So we have the ability to do this experiment to understand, which can inform decision-making further down the line.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Jeff Bloomfield? Okay, that's all it signed up with. Anyone else like to be heard tonight?
Good evening. My name is Ken Rashid. I live at 1338 Argonne Boulevard. I was listening to the people from the Housing Authority talk about the reconstruction that they hoped to do in the Cleveland Projects area. I think sometimes we forget, and I think you briefly mentioned it, Ms. Burke, that we forget that we are not dealing with numbers when you're talking about the demolition of those areas. We're talking about people, and there's never faces put to those numbers. I grew up in Cleveland Projects. It was four of us in the household. All four of us have college degrees, two of us have master's degrees. I said that to say this, that sometimes we use our positions and we totally neglect these people. We don't treat them like people. There's a tendency not to treat them like people, just have a symbol or a face in front of us. It's a shame, I watched what happened when they came with the plan, they called it the master plan. I call it the masters' plan when they first came to Cleveland Projects and presented those ideas to the residents. The, I define it as the trick, because the trick was that we are going to get the residents involved in what's going to actually happen with the construction of a new area. The trick was, you're getting these people involved, supposedly involved, but technically they are not involved. It was, they were, some of them were asked, what would they like to see in the community after the community was stormed out? They talked about drug stores and schools and all this kind of stuff. But the thing was, the presenters knew all the time that that would never happen. The whole intent of the presentation was to have it because it was required as part of the grant. So you have to do so many presentations to the community to get the grant. But the trick was, half the people that they were talking to didn't know anything about that. They didn't even know what was going on with it. Now, if you're talking about a lack of education, that could be possibly the reason they didn't understand. But there were some of us that understood exactly what they were talking about, even though we don't live in those areas. Again, I came up into Cleveland Projects, again, you're dealing with people, and I was hoping you would stick with your guns and not go along with the actual submitting of the application for the grant. You made some interesting comments from the very beginning, and I appreciated the comments that you made because you were talking about, there were actually people that we were talking about, and not just numbers. So I just wanted to say that on the behalf of those that are not here. Majority of the time, those people are not present to represent themselves, so someone has to do it for them. So again, I would hope that the grant wouldn't be going through unless there are accommodations made for the people that are going to be removed.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Joellen, P O Box 28427102. First, let me start by saying, I heard, I'm not quite sure who said, a conflict of interest with Bethesda, but not with Mr. Hank Perkins. I'm not quite sure how you can say there's a conflict with Mr. Montgomery because of the Bethesda, but there's no conflict of interest when it comes to accepting funds and contributions from Mr. Hank Perkins, but then voting on things that have taken place for almost 15 years, although you've been on the board on the city council for a little over 10 years. Why are things so complicated with this city of government? Seriously. We've got individuals that's been dealing with the city for over 40 years, Ms. Burke, who's been on the city council for over 40 years, and it's just really hard to hear you all say, well, you know what, this is what we've got. You know, we've got poverty here, we've got two Winston-Salem, but you got to take a look at yourselves, because this is what has happened. You all have helped create what we're seeing right now, and we keep throwing things at it. The problem I have with the situation with Cleveland Projects and everything is this. Cleveland Projects didn't just appear two years ago. New Hope, formerly Burke Village, that didn't appear just two years ago. We can give $30 million to Wake Forest University and other places for incentives, but we're talking about people. We're not talking about corporations or entities, we're talking about people, and this is the problem that I have with you all, because you keep telling me I represent the people. Well, if you represented the people the way that you should have, okay, then we wouldn't be in this situation where we are right now. We've got, you know, Gola and Grubbs coming up with this Cleveland deal, and I know I'm jumping around a little bit, where did all that come from? Where did all that come from? Who decided that Grubbs and Gola CDC would be a part of what's coming up if the city, if a housing authority gets this $30 million? My point is this, we are so tired, and it's not just me, of listening to the same rhetoric, because that's what it is, and it's not all of you, trust me, it's not, because some of you are very sincere, but then the majority of you are not. My point is this, when you keep saying you represent the people, you were born here, you did this, and you've done that, all I have to say is this, take a look in the mirror. Thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard?
No, before he says, I'm going to say something. I had a conversation with the city manager this week, and I said to him, when we have these people coming down, running their mouths, they need to come with a proposal how to make us better. I said, now they talk about the, we have children who are not being educated, they need to come up with some kind of proposal, where they would go to the school, and they would say to the superintendent, we would like to propose to you that we do something with this school, a couple of schools, where we can say, take these students who are not performing, help them, work with them, and then get them into some type of career, because we have a career center here, and we have counselors in these schools, and we could start looking at these children in grade six, seven, eight, ninth, and 10th, and tell them, as you talk with them, how they can get in certain programs, and then when these jobs that you criticize us for not hiring folks, they will be prepared. Now, I'm going to say one other thing. I can stay in this seat 40 more years if Lord will let me, because it's not a thing that you who run your mouth can do anything about, because I've got somebody in this city that they're going to keep me in office as long as I want to stay. So just have yourself some fun, enjoy yourselves, talk about this and that, and you need to find some way to be productive instead of coming down here criticizing all of the time. And it's not a thing you and anybody else can do, as far as I'm concerned. You tell the people in the Northeast Ward, they'll wonder if you're losing your mind if you want to talk about me not staying in this seat. I can stay forever, understand that.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Good evening, Youssef Suzel, P O Box 17506, Winston-Salem, North Carolina. I just, again, would like to remind everyone that you have taken an oath to the North Carolina Constitution, and everything that you do in state should be pursuant thereto, not to city ordinance, not to a North Carolina statute, and that's what we have a city attorney for. Because we're talking about how people are presenting things to this council. Yes, Ms. Burke, you made some very good points, and again, I, like Mr. Rashid, was hoping you would have stayed with that and voted against it, for the simple fact that I've never seen such a bad presentation for money, such a bad presentation. Because when they was at the Little Planning Committee meetings last week, you exactly right, they did not have that information in there. They did not have the map, they did not have the language. How inappropriate to come to you all, the elected people. If they were okay with not going for it at first, why go for it then? Because of some new stakeholders, some new investors, and not to have any type of oversight just to say, well, we can handle it, we can handle it, put the cart before the horse, and let's just get the money? Well, guess what? As Mr. Rashid just stated, a lot of things have already been misappropriated. It speaks for itself. All we got to do is look around, and Lee, I would like to know what in the world have you done for Cleveland? You haven't done nothing for Cleveland Avenue. You all don't even barely ride through the streets as bad as they are, and we're talking about accountability and transparency. Check your oath, check your heart pursuant to- Check your oath, check your heart, pursue it to the Constitution. To just let somebody come up here and give you such a bad presentation and saying that you're standing for the people, let it go. Money is not a cure for everything. We need to appropriate the money that's already been tweaked from 2000 to 2013, so the bond money from 2014 was tweaked because that. We're constantly tweaking stuff and not letting the public, the people, know. This has been setting a pattern, UDO 283. You're trying to rush it because of the stakeholders, to go past the people, everything. You rushed the other meeting an hour ahead last week to go past the people. Is this what it's about? Check your oath. If you don't mind, Lee, I also would like a copy of everyone's oath, okay, because they are elected officials. Thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard? Seeing no one out, declare the public comment period closed. Councilmember Clark has to be recognized.
Yes, I read two very interesting articles in two different newspapers this week I want to share very briefly. First, in The Chronicle, and I think it was last week, could have been the week before, but recently, they had a guest editorial from Reverend Paul Low, who is one of our state senators, concerning 5G technology, which is the new cellphone, cell tower-type technology. And I hadn't any more finished reading your paper, Mr. Taylor put it down when I picked up The Wall Street Journal, and they had a whole section on 5G technology. And the lead article on page two is how all across the U.S., 5G runs into local resistance, how the, the lack of forethought by cities in anticipating this entirely new technology and the problems it is causing. I simply highlight this, I know we've talked about it briefly, but I keep mentioning it because I do think it's something we need to put in our agenda when we talk to the General Assembly next year. Mr. Montgomery will be talking to you about this. I think it's something the state needs to be looking at in the North Carolina League of Municipalities as well, and that is how can North Carolina be the lead in this new technology? And so that when companies and high-tech folks are looking for places to locate, we'll be ready to be, to be there. And as I said, two very, I think, very good and leading newspapers have both highlighted this in the last week, so I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention. Thank you, Ms. Burke.
Thank you. Councilmember Bessie? I'm sorry.
You need to start with the school system, because they're the ones who's teaching, and they are known, if it's right on television, that it was stated that we're the lowest. And you need to surely be talking to those people in Raleigh who's doing all of these things that's keeping us the lowest.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Councilmember Bessie?
Yeah, the mayor, before the moment of silence, I asked that we keep the folks who have been particularly hit hard by Hurricane Florence and its flooding in our thoughts, and that was entirely appropriate. I know that we'll be hearing a lot more about how we can help over the coming weeks. And I was keeping track, and as were all of my colleagues, I know, of the impacts here in Winston-Salem and Forsyth County, and at this point, it looks like we were fortunate enough to have avoided major adverse impacts locally ourselves, and we're all thankful for that. So, I just wanted to put in an early plug, as, as you're reflecting on our dodging that worst impacts, keep in mind how you can, how we can help lessen the problems that our colleagues down east are having. One that comes to mind that's particularly easy, I know that North Carolina has set up what's being called the North Carolina Disaster Relief Fund, and that there are easy opportunities for contributing to that. I plan to do that myself, and I take a page from Councilmember McIntosh last week and say, in a sense, there is an app for that. The easiest way probably is for those of you who are used to using your smartphone for everything, to text Florence to 20222, and make a contribution online real quick.
Thank you. And we certainly made sure that we kept resources here until we knew that we were kind of past danger. But we've already started releasing some assets to go down east to help with, I know, our Swift Water, one of our Swift Water rescue facilities and others probably, but thank you, Councilmember Bessie. So, we've got Councilmember Montgomery next, and then Councilmember McIntosh.
Just a couple of things. One, a note I did have, again, to make sure that we do keep in our prayers, and I am a practical practitioner of my faith, and that means that we, people need your prayers, but they also need your action. And so, as we pray for folks, we also, in the ways that we can, and keep people in our thoughts, that we do that in our own ways, that it's meaningful for us and that we're able to do, whether it's our time or our talents. The other is in reference to one items that, particularly earlier with the sale of property, Ms. Garrity, I'm gonna ask that if one of the last things I do amongst council is to bring forward a resolution to the General Government Committee specifically outlining acts that we can take to move to fund housing, and what are those actions that we can take to actually fund housing in the past that we've done, and to how we can reinstate those items? Because I think it's disingenuous of us to talk about affordable housing if we're not going to invest in it consistently. So, I want us to make sure we have that conversation. The last thing is in reference to our community government, our General Government Committee meeting from last week, which timing was shifted, but that timing was shifted because of the length of the agenda, which has happened in the past. And when that happens, that is publicized on all media outlets. Those who are Facebook gurus out there, it's on Facebook and those other areas as well, and those who use Twitter, it's out there as well, it's in the newspapers, and it's also put out there for individuals and other places. UDO 283 spent almost a year in committee, so that is not Swift pushing through something that spent a year in committee. If that's Swift pushing too, then I don't know what, what's going slow, meaning, and that was taking into consideration all of the people's thoughts in reference to UDO 283. So, for those who are concerned, if you want to go back and check the record on how long this has been in committee, all of that is online. You can go back and watch all of the committee meetings, all of the debates from that, it's all online, that you can go and review for yourself, just like anybody's contributions to campaigns. If you go to FCVotes.com, click on the candidate's link, you can then scroll down, find the candidate of your thought that you'd like to click on. All of that is public information because that goes to a campaign, not to a person.
Thank you. Councilmember McIntosh?
Just to real quickly add to Mr. Bessie's request for contributions, I've been asked by a lot of people in Winston-Salem, and I think people have stepped up, and this is a community that likes to, likes to try to help. The other big thing is blood. There's a couple of blood drives going on, so if you really want to help, cash, credit card, or your blood donation are the things that are probably most important and easiest to get.
Councilmember Adams?
Of the day, I'd like to wish our mayor happy birthday.
Good, good.
You thought you was gonna get by, didn't you?
I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion second, all those in favor of adjourn, please say aye. Anyone opposed, we adjourn.
Thought he was gonna escape.